Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, August 7th, 2017 Watertown City Council Work Session. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll move right into item number two, Discussion on Ordinance seventeen dash thirty-four, Amending Section thirteen point oh three oh three of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Watertown to Update Fireworks Permitting. Justin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. For the council's knowledge, obviously you can see behind me, we have Chief Krantz here to maybe answer any questions of a substantive department-level nature. I'm purely here to provide a little bit of legal context regarding this particular proposed ordinance. It was a concept that arose out of research, that itself arose out of the proclamation of former Mayor Thorson earlier this year. The question became, you know, what was the legal basis of the proclamation? And I believe at a special city council meeting to address the results of the election that the concerns were brought forth about the fireworks proclamation that Mayor Thorson had issued at that time. And while that particular proclamation did comport with state law, there was a recognition that the way our ordinance read would potentially run afoul of state law that occupies the field of fireworks regulation. Specifically, we have Chapter thirty-four dash thirty-seven of South Dakota Codified Law that regulates fireworks at the state level. And there are essentially two types of fireworks displays depending upon, well, two types of fireworks displays that impact the regulatory framework that applies to them. The first is what's called a public display of fireworks. And those fireworks displays are permissible year-round with a permit that's issued under the authority of the city council as governing body of the municipality. The authority for that particular provision is SDCL thirty-four dash thirty-seven dash thirteen, as referenced in the proposed language in Ordinance number seventeen thirty-four in that first paragraph. The other type of fireworks display is what's called a, well, there isn't really a term for it. Basically, we can refer to it as a non-public display. That would cover basically your backyard displays, displays where the public isn't invited to partake in the display. And those are covered under SDCL thirty-four dash thirty-seven dash sixteen point one, which provide that private displays are authorized in the state from June twenty-seventh to the first Sunday after the Fourth of July, and from December twenty-eighth until New Year's Day. So effectively, there are two narrow windows of time provided in state law for the private shooting of fireworks. And again, that's distinguished from the public display of fireworks, which could, in theory, be year-round so long as it receives a permit from the council. So what does that then mean and why is the language changed in thirteen oh three oh three? Well, the language strikes a reference to the order or proclamation of the mayor of this city as being the basis for authorizing a fireworks display. What that then does, and then what is supplanted in its place, is that a written permit from the city council must be issued in order for a public display of fireworks to occur with the recommendation of the fire chief or the chief's designee, who oftentimes would be the fire marshal. What that then effectively does is it eliminates the mayor's ability to proclaim any sort of public or private display and thereby authorize it. So effectively, it does limit the ability of folks to shoot off fireworks, the potential ability for folks to shoot off fireworks relative to the language we currently have in ordinance. Because as the ordinance reads right now, the mayor would have the authority to proclaim any individual applicant has the ability to shoot fireworks during those two narrow timeframes that I discussed with you earlier, from June, or June twenty-seventh until the first Sunday after the Fourth of July, as well as the time period from December twenty-eighth to January first. So it restricts it somewhat. But the existing permissive provision in here that allows for land surrounding Lake Campesca to have fireworks shot off from it on July, on July fourth, as well as the days of December twenty-eighth through January first, that, that remains in this ordinance. So that would not change. One provision that's added here to the bottom on the second paragraph is a recognition that there is state park property within the area annexed by Resolution Y eighteen thirty-two. In other words, it's a park that is adjacent to Lake Campesca, that being Sandy Shore State Park and Recreation Area. State law appears to allow for individuals to approach game fishing parks to obtain a permit to fire off fireworks in that particular park. And this language reflects that fact, so as to basically alert the community to the fact that they, you know, need to obtain the permission of Sandy Shore, of the game fishing parks to shoot fireworks in that park. Beyond that...
Justin, along that line, I don't want to interrupt, but what about Memorial Park? Because that's county-owned.
Correct.
What's the status there?
That's a great question, Councilman. My understanding is that fireworks are already disclaimed as prohibited out there on the signage there. So anybody entering the park would know not to shoot fireworks. I am not sure if Sandy Shores is similarly marked. But more, I guess more to the point, too, there wasn't a provision that I could find that would allow for the county to uniquely authorize. I presume there is, but I was able to find one for game fishing parks, and so that's why that's included in there.
I guess just a comment. I was one that raised this issue at that meeting that you alluded to, Justin, and I commend, commend you for bringing this forth to try to, you know, put a little more restrictions on it than what we had in the past. So I'm assuming this goes through a first and second reading then at a full council meeting? Is that the proper procedure then?
Correct, Councilman. Correct.
I should add that I asked Justin to look at this because there is a fireworks permit application that was brought to me. And according to our ordinance, I could issue the permit by proclamation, and there's a permit form for that. And it was stated as a private display that's coming up this weekend. And I had some questions about that. First of all, I don't like that there's one human that could, by our ordinance, allow fireworks anywhere, anytime that I would choose. I don't think that's appropriate. I think it's better handled by the council as a group. And so I, that's what I'm more in favor of. But also, Justin found that we can be more restrictive than the state law, but we can't be less restrictive in our ordinance. And our ordinance was less restrictive than the state law. So we must change it in order to be in compliance. And so this is what Justin has drafted, to be in compliance. So we, we won't act on this tonight, but I am asking you to give me your thoughts on the permit application that I received for a private firework display this weekend. I, I believe that's not allowable by state law. Am I correct?
Yeah, the way that state law reads, so we're talking SDCL thirty-four dash thirty-seven dash thirteen, a public display of fireworks is permitted, and there is no timeframe that is given in this particular statute. And in fact, it says, it starts off with the phrase, "Nothing in this chapter prohibits the use of public display of fireworks." Well, what else is in this chapter? If you look at SDCL thirty-four dash thirty-seven dash sixteen point one, it provides, except as otherwise provided in this chapter, "It is unlawful for a person to discharge fireworks in the state, except during the period beginning June twenty-seventh and extending through the end of the first Sunday after July fourth, and during the period beginning December twenty-eighth and extending through January first. A violation of this section is a Class Two misdemeanor." Furthermore, there are exceptions built in for extraneous uses, like, for instance, there is SDCL thirty-four dash thirty-seven dash twenty that allows for fireworks to protect sunflower crops. Or there are certain fireworks that are permitted all year, but they are of the snakes and smoke effect variety, and single-shot parachute pieces without a flare. So we're, we're talking statute getting very specific as to what's able to be fired year-round. But that's a very limited category of fireworks, commercially available fireworks.
The application that we received was for a private display this weekend. And I'm going to ask you to weigh in on that later. But I suppose we should discuss what constitutes a private display versus a public display. And we talked a little bit about that. There isn't guidance, right?
That is correct, Mayor. I apologize for not pointing this out before. Public display is referenced, as I quoted in statute, but what falls under SDCL thirty-four dash thirty-seven dash sixteen point one, there isn't a private display as used in statute. So presumably, it's non-public displays, i.e. private displays. And the statute doesn't do a very good job of describing what constitutes a, a public display. It has definitions in thirty-four dash thirty-seven dash one, but none of those definitions include public display.
So Justin, if I'm reading that, does that mean that if they're not charging, is that considered a public display, or?
You know, Councilman, I would say that the distinction between public and private is whether the public is allowed to, whether it's for a fee or not, whether the public is able to be a part of the, the display.
Versus like a party or, you know, like a company picnic or something along those lines?
Members-only exclusivity, correct.
Okay. Where are they looking to have this display at?
At the private golf course. And, and I suppose you could interpret that in any way that you see appropriate, private, public, if, if you can see it, it's public. Well, fireworks are shot in the sky, so everything is public.
But at the same time, as you pointed out, Mayor, earlier, too, that sort of devalues the entire distinction, making it, yeah.
Right, it does. And, and not given any guidance, that's why I'm going to be asking you. The, the applicant did indicate this is a private display, and so I don't think I can issue that.
I will say, though, I don't believe that the event itself that, that they are having, and I don't qualify this, I'm not going to the event and I don't belong at that, that golf course. But my understanding is, is that it is a member-guest golf tournament. I believe that they'll wrap up with the fire, the fireworks. And that tournament is open to the public, and to come in to watch the tournament, eat, have a beer, go around the course. So from, from that aspect, I don't believe there's any limitation in regards to who can go, just...
Okay, except that he did check the box, private.
I understand. But again, we go back and forth.
Yeah.
Private meaning private entity versus governmental entity, not sure what the box means. But I don't believe that there are restrictions as to who can come out there. I think it's an open invitation to anybody to come out, and I think that would be, from that aspect, I believe that to be true.
When, when this comes back, I, I hope that you'll all provide some careful consideration as to what will be considered private, what will be considered public, and under which circumstances we would want to allow this. And for tonight, we'll just weigh in on the one specific issue. But if you have any other questions for Justin while he's here, here he is.
You want to come over and talk more?
Sure.
You know, I guess one of the questions, I guess, then would be is, so any business could, any business could come up and say that they want to apply, and then they could shoot fireworks off in their parking lot, as long as there was no restriction as to who could attend, correct? I mean...
That, you know, you're, you're getting at, I think, a number of really good points, really testing sort of the elasticity of this law and where it could potentially stretch to. And I, I really appreciate that, Councilman. One of the things, you know, there are additional requirements to a public display in order for it to be authorized per state statute. The fireworks need to be purchased from a licensed wholesaler under this chapter, and any public display shall comply with NFPA Standard eleven twenty-three, the fire code nineteen ninety-five edition. And, you know, really, it kind of comes down to, particularly if this ordinance were adopted, what the recommendations of the fire chief and/or, or fire chief or his or her designee would be. So presumably, there would be a, a great deal of investigation. Well, I mean, there would be an investigation conducted to ascertain whether, you know, the fireworks are being shot off in a proper area. To my knowledge, there are standards that the Watertown Fire Rescue also employs in, in this circumstance. I was told by Chip that there were criteria that he relies upon. So, you know, there, there would need to be some hoops jumped through, if you will. It wouldn't be sort of a willy-nilly application process.
I would just ask the basic question. How many fireworks shows do we want in town? That, that, you know, that's what it comes down to, and it goes back to like the street dance logic. How many of those do we want? Okay, we're okay with some of them, but how do we keep that or write this where it's a manageable number?
Right. And, and not just the number, but how close together, like, do you want to have three in a row one week, or require that there be at least a week between? Something like that.
Yeah.
I guess I'll, I'll weigh in at this point, too. I share the same concern that you expressed on. I isolated a display like this, this is my neighborhood out there, very close. I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I'm not so sure. I mean, if by their own definition, they've, they're indicating that it's a private display on the application, do we have any choice at this point, a, as far as allowing it without being in violation of South Dakota law? Or can they come back with a different application and, and check the public display box and then potentially allow it? I mean, I think we got a very narrow circumstance here. If by their own admission, they're saying it's private, how, how can we grant it?
How far in advance do they have to fill out that application?
I'm not aware, Councilman, of a particular timeframe.
So they could come in tomorrow and check the other box.
Do you know, Chief?
Well, Doug's coming up here. Is there, do we define on that form, on that application, what private means versus what?
Yeah, sometimes...
Because is it private meaning the ownership, who's putting it on? Or does private mean it's restricted?
So my, my first part was how long of a timeframe it is. This is kind of new territory and stuff, so how it's happened in the past is, they will come into either the mayor's office or to ours and wish to, to have a fireworks display. They would get a permit. They can get that permit from either place or online. They fill that permit out, and the first step is the, the fire marshal goes out and, and looks at the property and, and looks at the times that are filled out in there. He checks the area for safety and, and what times he'll allow the display to be shot off and, and a few things like that. And once he approves that it's going to be, going to be taken care of, purchased and, and shot off by a licensed vendor, he approves it. And then it, then it went to the mayor's office for approval. And once, once they paid the permit fees, then they would get a signed form. And at that point, it would be sent over to dispatch for notification, along with the, the sheriff's office and, and things like that. So that's how it's happened in the past. So on the, on that particular, for the one happening next week, you know, I don't, I don't know what, what they really tell you on that one, on, on the timeframe, you know?
Doug, has it been a requirement that be a licensed, I'll call them a pyromaniac, I'm not sure what you'd call them, but the, the people that shoot them off, right? Like lose, for example?
Yes.
Is the requirement that they do have a licensed one? Because there's different categories of those fireworks at which they can buy, right?
Yeah, and, and they, they, they can't, they cannot purchase those off, off the regular season, and, and they can't purchase certain explosives without a licensed person to shoot those off that's, that's fully trained and stuff, so...
One suggestion, one possibility to potentially protect the city further is, much like we have with other special event licenses, to require that there be some sort of general liability insurance associated with the particular public display. That, you know, obviously, if it's going to be a public display, there's the component of openness to the public. But generally speaking, there's also a size component to a public display, you know, being larger than a purely private. So given that, there's the potential for liability, you know, and not saying that cases against municipalities for authorizing large public displays have been very successful. But, you know, all it takes is one case, and, you know, we don't want the City of Watertown to be that case. So, you know, maybe we could have some insurance requirement put in there. That could be an additional impediment to those who, again, decide willy-nilly, I want to have this private display that I'll declare a public display and, you know...
In this case, do we know that a pyrotechnician is going to fire off these works, or if, if it is, would you think that they have the liability insurance? I would think that they would cover that. I mean, it would seem like if they were doing that, they would have a umbrella liability clause that would cover that.
I, I, I think that's correct, Councilman, but, you know, that liability only extends as far as the insurance for that particular contractor extends. And if for some reason they're able to get out of handling a particular liability, then they'll go to the next deep pockets they can get to, which...
Can we require that any of these, private or public, be handled by a licensed pyrotechnician? Versus, here's what I do have a concern with. So you get, you get a, I'll just talk about the golf course. You get out there golfing all day, you have a few beers here and there, now we're going to shoot off fireworks. There does become a safety issue, not only for the people that are doing that, but it becomes a safety issue for the public that's there to see that. Much less likely to happen if it is a licensed individual. And it also then, it, it does become a deterrent a little bit, because now, now they got to pay a little bit more to get it done, versus just buying some fireworks and shooting them off.
That is certainly a fair concern from a city liability perspective. I, I would tend to agree with you, Councilman. Any, any kind of formality, professional credentials that can, you know, come, come into the mix when you're dealing with such a volatile, you know, things is gunpowder, essentially. You know, that, that is important. There, there may be other concerns with that, but, you know, I, I see where you're coming from, certainly from a legal perspective.
Does anybody know if such a license exists and who issues it?
There is a, an ATF license for those that transact in explosives and fireworks. Beyond that, I don't know if there's a particular license sure that that requires. So that's a license to transact across interstate lines, to my knowledge. But whether that then requires some sort of certification as a professional pyrotechnician, I, I don't recall precisely.
What defiance public?
Well, it depends upon the circumstance. It's the most lawyer, lawyerly response you'll get. But in, in this case, you know, I, if we're talking about accommodations, a public accommodation as opposed to a private is one where the general public is allowed to enter in, it's advertised as being open to the public, whether a fee is charged or not. They, they are invited to take part in the, the fireworks display, is basically how that works. And, you know, obviously, we run into issues with fireworks being shot off and general public being able to see it by virtue of them being fireworks, right? But I, I think it kind of comes down to whether it's been open to the public and advertised as such.
How much advertising?
Yeah. Oh, we could go down this rabbit hole as far as you want, and Councilman, we really can't.
And could they, you know, could it be, well, you can come and watch it, it's a hundred bucks?
I mean, that is something that you, as the council, are blessed to have weighing on your shoulders.
To me...
It's a reasonable person's standard is what it comes down to. You can spot people trying to circumvent the law by being clever pretty quickly. You have, you know, the discretion to be able to call that out and deny a permit.
To me, somebody, let them have a little fun, shoot off some fireworks. It's not the end of the world, you know? We don't get a lot of these requests, and I don't think there's enough in there to call what's a private party and what's not.
Except that he did check the private box. So are we okay with him coming back and checking the public box tomorrow?
Call him and tell him to check the public box tomorrow. Because we don't have anything in there that gives a time limit.
But I will say this, if he, first of all, I'll say, if it's private, it isn't allowed by state statute. If he does come and check that box, I think he has to comply, obviously, with whatever constraints and, and safety precautions that have to be taken, licensing and so forth. That has to be a part of that, and I don't know if there's a different application for that moving forward. But, you know, there is a little gray area here between what do you call private and what do you call public. And I think, in, in my opinion, I guess I would look at it and say, it's public if the public is allowed to go to it. If it's advertised, the, the public can go, and I don't know how many advertisements and stuff you got to add, but if it's advertised, the public can, can go to this event, and whether it's a pay or free, if, if they have an opportunity to attend that event. And all those things are taken care of. To me, that's a, a public event. If, the, a good concern about, well, how many of these are going to happen here? Are we going to have fifteen, twenty of these? You know, I think if, if we get, we haven't had, I don't think, a lot of applications like this, but down the road, if we get into a situation where we're, you know, a lot of folks are, are applying for this, then we may have to take a look at the, the density, you know? But there, I can see that little bit of gray area there between how we define public and, and private.
Well, the restaurant out there is a public restaurant. You could, I mean, all of us could be sitting out there Saturday night, if that's when it is, having dinner, and here's a firework show, so we would get to watch it. I mean, they wouldn't say, oh, you're half done with your meal, you know, you have, I mean, it is a public restaurant now, too.
I'm going to guess they probably closed it for that night. My guess is they probably closed it, but I, I'll go back to analogy I drew in that this is like the street dance deal. There's a dozen rabbit holes we can go down on this one, so I, I tend to lean towards looking at it like the street dances. They're not being requested en masse. They're only asking for a half an hour, you know? When we extended the fireworks, the issue was it, it goes on forever, there's no start and stop. So this one is, is very confined. If we could find a way, I think, to work with an existing ordinance as it is, and then treat it like the street dance, where up we get a bunch of these requests, and then maybe we got to revisit it. I'm just, I'm trying to simplify it.
Sure. To your point, Councilman, you know, the way that ordinance reads right now, it's the reason why this permit is up for consideration by the council tonight. If the council views this as a, you know, as a public display, then per state statute, it would be authorized to issue this permit. It basically authorized the mayor to sign the permit. The second thought is, getting to what you and Councilman, Mueller mentioned... The second thought is, getting to what you and Councilman Mueller mentioned, excuse me, as to number, our records appear to indicate that in 2016, there were eleven requests where permits were issued.
Well, and we have, we've, hasn't the, the racetrack has had their own shows out there at times, too, if I remember right.
Racetrack, that's correct.
You know, so I, I guess I really don't know what the difference is on this. You know, I do understand we're, we're probably trying to assume when they check private, what they meant by that, right? I mean, so I think it would certainly appear like the application in itself needs some revisiting. And I think we probably have to have a longer discussion about this scenario, too, of what our requirement's going to be and, and, you know, kind of clarify this some. But, you know, I wouldn't really see this right now as any different than if the, the, the racetrack casino speedway came in and wanted to do it. Because again, I believe, what I know of this event, the event is not a private event. It is an open event in regards to people to come out there. So from my standpoint, Mayor, I would be fine with allowing it. But I do think it, it requires additional discussion and consideration on our part in the future so that we can have a better understanding.
I do have, Chief, what's your recommendation with the current weather conditions for this to be held Saturday?
Well, so that is a, a good question. Right now, we, we look at it from a safety standpoint and we have a licensed vendor out there doing that show. We've had really good luck with them in the past. They, they work really hard to make sure everything is safe. Their, their people that they have in ground zero where they're shooting off the explosives, they're all certified to be in there. And, and they do have to take courses to, to get this certification. And that's why we feel comfortable when they're on, on board because they stick around for several hours or at least an hour afterwards. And when things cool down, they can't go back into the explosives areas and even touch those for a certain amount of time. And then they're around there looking for any hotspots or anything like that. So we, we feel pretty comfortable when, when these licensed vendors are, are running these shows and stuff. And we, we had the eleven last year, we never had one event. You know, the, the, the fourth of July or third of July, I guess it was on the first of July, I'm sure, wasn't it? At the, the Redland. You know, worked really, really good hand in hand with those folks out there. And we had a lot of spot fires in, in the field. We were on scene and, and stuff. And we don't hope to, to have to do that on every time. But we knew from a safety standpoint, we needed to be there and, and we put out a few spot fires. And, and they were right there, making sure everything was taken care of. And we've had really good luck with it in the past. So I don't anticipate any, any concerns with the, the show on Saturday.
Chief, do you know where they're planning on having this display at if it is approved? Like what portion of the golf course, in the parking lot?
Yeah, I do not have that in front of me. I'm not a hundred percent sure where that location is.
Because I know they have, they have sprinkler systems all throughout the golf course. I'm just wondering if it's, if there is an opportunity, if there's some sort of a fire that they can turn those on in an emergency.
Yes, and we, and we have a, you know, we're, we're pretty close by. So if there's any concern during these shows, I mean, we'll, we'll surely come out and, and look it over, so.
Okay, anyone else wanna weigh in?
I do have a question. Who's actually applying for this? Is it the Prairie Winds Golf Club or is it an individual?
No, it, it was an individual. The address was the golf course.
It's a licensed vendor that's, that applies for it?
Okay, thank you. Item three is discussion on ordinance number seventeen dash thirty-five, amending chapter seven point zero three of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown to update city council procedures and duties. Justin's gonna help us with this, too.
Be happy to, Mayor, thank you. There are three things that are attempted by this proposed revision, one of which is really just sort of straightforward Scrivener's modifications here. Standardizing the language referring to you folks. Here it's aldermen, it goes between aldermen and council members. I've struck references to aldermen, alderpersons, and replace them with council members. Very minor. The second portion is a proposed rule twenty-eight. And I guess to back up here, this chapter is really kind of the procedure chapter for the city council, as evident by the title here. The first section relates to special meetings, which are called from time to time. And it gives the protocol for these meetings, which are called outside of the first and third Monday framework. The second section here, seven point oh three oh two, lists the many rules that control the business, if you will, of the city council. I mean, it covers issues like standing council committees, you know, how we proceed in terms of, you know, who gets called when, various motions that are proper at certain times, that kind of thing. So it really gets into a great deal of detail. The thought was to add a rule twenty-eight to this particular proposal because there really hadn't been any, you know, formal discussion as to the process by which items come onto the city council agenda. Statute and Home Rule Charter basically say the same thing and they reference it rather obliquely. It provides that, and let me see if I can get the particular citation here, I apologize. Per Home Rule Charter, section two point oh three and SDCL nine dash eight dash three, effectively both provisions provide that the mayor shall recommend for the council's consideration such measures as the mayor may deem expedient. I've checked with other city attorneys throughout the state and they are of one mind that there isn't anything in statute otherwise that talks about how an agenda is populated. We do have in statute a provision for open meetings and the requirement there that an agenda be posted, a proposed agenda be posted at least twenty-four hours prior to a meeting. And so beyond that, and beyond the fact that the agenda must have items on it that the body can take action upon, there isn't that much that defines how that process works. Now Sioux Falls, I, I would, I would note that Sioux Falls appears to have a process for introducing new material to their council meetings. It is a process whereby the mayor basically is able to put something on the agenda or to council members. And while the two council members convention isn't supported directly in state statute, it kind of goes to the fact that a motion and a second is required of the council in order to entertain or to start discussion on a particular agenda item. And that, I believe, is where that convention comes from. What's proposed here is very basic language when all is, is said and done. What, what we do is, number one, it would solidify the twenty-four hour requirement for agenda items to be placed on the city council agenda. Now, I would note that this language specifically excludes the supporting documentation for that particular agenda item. Because it appears in our open meetings laws that statute allows for documents that may form the basis of an agenda item to be slightly changed from the form that may have been sent out initially with the agenda. You know, in order to account for the fact that there are sometimes last minute negotiations that only do tweaks to documents. And so, you know, it, it would be something that wouldn't be difficult for the council to consider, you know, as the document is provided to you right before a meeting. So long as the other part of our open meetings law is met, namely that a copy of that revised document be available to the public and to the media as soon as it is, it is available to you all. So that's included in this language. But otherwise, that first, first sentence and the second sentence get back to that earlier authority I mentioned about the mayor shall recommend. At this point, I have included in there the language, essentially that the mayor shall review agenda items. And that language does not necessarily state approve. So that could be a potential clarification or keeping it as reviewed might be your preference. But it is important to keep in mind that per state statute, the city council is in the driver's seat with regard to its own rules of procedure. And so you have particular responsibility with regard to this provision. Or, you know, choosing what to do with, with this particular provision. But, and feel free to critique the fact that this is placed under city council procedure. There didn't appear to be any other place that necessarily lent itself to its inclusion in, in our ordinances. The, the final section is a proposed section, seven point oh three oh three. And I'll note right off the bat that I did not include all of the liaison obligations that exist out there. And I apologize, there were a few that didn't appear on the roster that I had. And so I'll be sure to include those. But really, it's broken out into two subparts. The first subpart describes the three boards in which city council members actually act as full members, meaning they have full voting authority. The second subpart relates to those boards where city council members act as liaisons, where you do not have voting authority, you do not have full member authority. You are essentially there to facilitate communication between that board and the city council, as you know. The, sure. That distinction is made, and I'm glad you asked that question, Councilman. Generally speaking, in state statute, the ability for a city council person to serve on other boards is dependent entirely upon whether there is an ordinance that allows for them to serve on that board. And there is the question of whether they are compensated on that board as well, which can impact their service. The particular provision that relates to that, and I'll see if I can pull it up here real quick. I apologize for not having that at the ready. It's in the, it's in chapter nine fourteen. And I believe it's nine fourteen sixteen, let me make sure of that. Yes, that is correct. SDCL nine dash fourteen dash sixteen allows for a mayor, alderman, commissioner or trustee, in this case, in this form of government, mayor and alderman would be pertinent, to serve on a board if the ordinance or resolution establishing the board specifically includes the mayor, an alderman, commissioner or trustee in the membership of the board. So basically, if we allow an ordinance for the creation of a board and we then further allow an ordinance that a member of the city council is authorized to be a full voting member of that board, then they are authorized to serve as a full voting member.
Then the follow-up question is, one A, animal control board. Why is that a full voting member? What, what is distinctive about that board as opposed to the others under the other option?
That is certainly a fair question, Councilman. Whenever that section three point oh four oh three was drafted in its current form, the city council saw fit to make that explicitly a city council membership, full member body. And, I mean, we could speculate as to the reasons for that. The body does exercise some sovereign political, if you, state sovereign political power devolved all the way down to it by issuing chicken permits, by issuing declarations of vicious dog, vicious dog declarations is another example. I believe those are really the two sovereign authorities they exercise. As for the park and recreation board, you know, there are some similar sovereign prerogatives. The Watertown Regional Library Board of Trustees is a good one. That's actually provided in statute as opposed to ordinance that the city council can authorize one of its members to serve as a full voting member. And there, there's a degree of autonomy with the, the board that lends itself to, you know, having a, a member of the city council on it as a full member.
Justin, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
I want to come back to this, this part of it for, in just a second. But when we get back to the agenda, who is the owner of the agenda? I want, I want a position name, who is it?
So as far as I can tell, there isn't an owner specified in statute. In practice, that authority has been, I, I can fairly say, I think, has fallen to the finance officer to compile. Because they are the, in an aldermanic form of government, they are the highest officer and are viewed as such in statute.
Okay, does compile mean owner? Or are they the, the gatherer of the eggs, so to speak?
They are the gatherer.
Okay, so who is the owner? We are not saying that here. Now, it seems like a really odd question in this point of, of our history that we don't know who's responsible for our agenda.
Sure.
Our Home Rule Charter states that the mayor shall be, shall recommend. It also states that the mayor shall preside.
Correct.
Okay? But then, when it goes on, it says the finance officer responsible for noticing, okay? To me, those are distinctly two different things. One's the gatherer, the other one is go get the eggs, right? And so to me, in that case, if I just, my interpretation, you and I have had this discussion, my interpretation is, is the mayor is the owner of the agenda.
I think because the mayor is the only person specified in statute and Home Rule Charter as being the political officer that recommends items to, for the council's consideration, I think that's a fair statement.
With the exception of where two council members can, can ask for something to be added in it, it must be added, correct? Is that what that, you had said earlier?
I, I said that earlier as being a creature of Sioux Falls ordinance. I haven't found anything specifically authority wise that says it must be that.
I, I really would like, and maybe it's just because I'm just very black and white when it comes to something like this. This language does not need to be obscure like this. It should specifically state who it is. Who is the owner, who is the person responsible for the agenda? I would like to know that. I, you know, we, we go around and we, over the last month, we look at the discussions we've had. And we're sitting here and we still don't know who it is. Why can't we say who it is? Now, being responsible for gathering the, the item, making sure that it gets noticed, okay, that's a different thing than who is ultimately responsible for it. And to me, when, when the mayor presides, the mayor should have responsibility for that. And if we want to add something on there, that, that, if we have two council members want to add something, then it should be allowed, if that's the case. There should be that caveat that, that if the mayor didn't like something to go on there, just say no when others want it on there. I think there should be something along that line. But I think the owner needs to be the mayor, I think it should be the mayor.
Sure, sure.
As the presiding officer here. The second thing is when we go down to the boards on your rule twenty-eight, the first part of that, where they have voting rights, that, because of the voting rights, does each board need to be specifically identified then in ordinance?
Yes, it would have to.
Okay, what about non-voting rights?
Non-voting rights do not necessarily need, well, I should back up. So if the board, and, and some of these boards are not authorized in our ordinances, they exist independently of the state, or of, of the city. So there doesn't need to be anything in there. If, if they are provided in ordinance, generally speaking, there is a, a provision for a liaison from the council to serve there. But in terms of having it here in ordinance, I would argue that this listing needs to be in there because Home Rule Charter provides that the duties of the council should be spelled out in ordinance. And insofar as a liaison role is a duty, it needs to be somewhere in ordinance.
Can't we have, so that we're not going in here and changing this in the future, if these X number have voted... If these X number have voting rights, two or three or whatever it is, list them specifically. But then, can't we generically state that they're, something along the lines of that they will serve as a liaison according to the established committees and not be specific to which ones they are?
Well, Mike, the suggestion on that, I'm okay with listing them just so we have an idea what they are, but say including, but maybe not make it an exclusive list. So including but not exclusive or something like that.
But my point though, Don, is if we want to change, we don't want to take one off then, we gotta do an ordinance change. Versus just a list change, or we want to add one, now we gotta do an ordinance change. Why wouldn't we have a generic statement? Kind of going back to the old tree disease thing, right? Instead of being specific, let's go on a more generic basis so that when the next disease comes, we don't have to do an ordinance change. In this case, if we want to add one or take one off, we don't have to do an ordinance change.
Well, I think if we, like Don said, say includes the following, I mean, then you have listed some of them. And if we wanted to do away with that, we would have to do an ordinance change. But it's, how do you keep track? And I had a difficult time knowing what to appoint everyone to and to see whose terms had expired and where, you know, if there's not some central point which describes the council duties, then how do I know?
Couldn't we have that either in the finance office or in the human resources office? A formal list that just gets maintained, but we're not having to make
Yes, and not have it be
To make changes.
But just have a, yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Right, you're gonna be updating that, right? Give that to somebody to be the owner of that, then it's gonna be maintained and we know where it's at. But it just seems like we should, let's try to stay away from adding so many specifics in our ordinances that every time we want to make a little change, now we gotta go through an ordinance change.
The other thing you could maybe do is sometimes just, like our fees, we used to have every one of them in ordinance. We just, we took them all out and put them in a fee resolution. And that just stays in force, our standing council policies. It just stays in force until another one gets put in its place. You can always, and those are permanent records and we put that on there and it sits there for eternity and they're really easy to search for. So just another suggestion, if you just want to say, you know, reference that by resolu, that those liaisons are set by resolution and leave it at that.
So we can do a resolution at any time?
Right, and set them and then they sit there and they're in force and then all you'd have to do is just revise the resolution, just like we do fee structures.
I think it should be memorialized, that sounds like a simple
Right, and then it doesn't matter who changes, whether the mayor changes, any finance office staff, any, I mean, then it doesn't really matter. It's just, it's there and it's set by resolution, the ordinance says it's set by resolution, so we have a place to look for it and it's just there. And just another suggestion, if you don't
Mayor, I do have one other question of clarification. In here, we've talked a little bit about voting and non-voting liaison. But in here, it's clearly stated under item two, which is non-voting liaison for the Watertown Plan and Commission and Board of Adjustment. And we've actually had the liaison vote in situations where we needed him for a quorum on the Board of Adjustment. And that's not the way this would read.
We're changing that because, as Justin pointed out to me, that is not supported by state law to have a council person voting on, it's some sort of conflict. So we won't have that anymore with the new appointments.
Okay, just good clarification, because I think we were using the liaison as a vote on things, only on the Board of Adjustment because he would never vote on it, or that person would never vote on it at the council level. But good for clarification, thank you.
Justin, is that, our Home Rule Charter doesn't allow us to circumvent the state statute that was being referenced, does it or does it?
It would, but we would have to make it clear in the Home Rule Charter that we are circumventing state statute with regard to our administrative legislative structure of government. So whereas we have a little bit more leeway, being a Home Rule Charter, with regard to what I'll call more mundane ordinances, our police powers and whatnot. When it comes to fundamental structures of government, we have less. So, and here, this was a case of the fact that our ordinances provided for there being a non-voting liaison of the Plan Commission. And that the Board of Adjustment membership was provided as being the membership of the Plan Commission. Well, if we've determined that that city council member is a non-voting liaison to the Plan Commission, then ergo, it's a non-voting member of the Board of Adjustment.
They are separate boards though, just so happens they coincide as to the same group of people, right?
Correct.
Is that something that maybe we should put on our list that we want to add to for further discussion at some point about Home Rule Charter potential changes? And in the meantime, then we have to go with state statute, right?
Yes.
If we
Because I would, there has been a lot of times in years I was on there, we had to count on our liaison in order to be there, in order to get a vote done, otherwise we wouldn't have meetings.
We had two extras on the Board of Adjustment that are alternates that have been filled with actual council people by definition. And there's no reason for that, if we appoint two people that aren't on the Plan Commission to serve there, then there'd be no need to do that.
As alternates.
Right, as alternates.
Which is what we have in ordinance.
Right. Any other comments?
I think one of the reasons that I had to vote was because we were short a couple of appointees on there.
Right.
We were running, we had, we were only, if everybody would be there, we would barely make the minimum, so.
We had two vacancies that weren't filled with people, it wasn't like people weren't showing up, they just, there weren't people appointed. Okay, I have a note to add, concession stand discussion to the agenda.
Ken's in the corner, should be pretty helpful here. So you may recall a number of months back where there'd been a discussion about a concession stand that existed within the right of way. And I don't know if Ken can pull that up on GIS, I should, what's, oh, Shane's got it on his. And you'll recall that the concession stand itself, the structure was entirely within the right of way. And the ostensible owner of the property adjacent, who had also, as you can see here, the GIS line isn't quite exact. Basically, the boundary line is just a few feet past, maybe a foot or two past, the concession stand structure to the north and west. So the concern was, what do we do with this structure that's completely within the right of way and the potential for liability that it could pose to the city? Because it is possibly viewed as an obstruction. And there, not only was the issue of the concession stand, but there are also bollards out front and it's kind of an interesting curve. So, you know, the thought was, well, okay, you know, there's the possibility of bringing it down for liability purposes. But I think it's fair to say that there was also the thought of potentially reusing or using the structure for some sort of contractor, some sort of concessions, concessionaire for the park nearby or for the general public. Ken and his team had taken a look at that structure to see if indeed it is salvageable. And I don't know, Ken, if you'd be willing to
Yeah, Keith and I went out and took a look at this structure, I mean, I guess if you're gonna leave it right where it's at as what it is, it's not much more than a tent. I mean, this thing is, in fact, I was just trying to find some pictures that I'd placed on here.
Who owns this?
We do now. It was granite dust by the owner.
And to be fair, by existing in the right of way, we effectively own it by virtue of that fact alone. But what we were given by the owner was also an easement that allows us to deconstruct the building. Oh, yeah, can, that allows us to deconstruct the building and have some debris temporarily located upon, you know, a small chunk of her property.
I mean, this thing is just, it's like two foot on center boards, there's no insulation, the ceiling raptors are starting to come down, the shingles are shut. These are just panes of glass stuck inside there, it's, you know, could it make another summer or winter, a couple more? Possibly, in space, but it's not worth taking or moving or doing anything else with it. Me and Keith and I both recommend if we're doing anything with this, tear it down and get it out of there.
I would clear it away and it's a dangerous area right there anyway. I would get rid of it and make a nice ice shack though, I think.
I don't even think you'd make a nice ice shack.
Hey, Justin, so everybody that's drank beer in there, would they have gotten an open container in a public place? Being it's on city right away. And is there a statute of limitations?
Asking the real questions. Because I know a friend. Oh, yes, yes. Well, I can't give legal advice to non-city personnel, so sorry for your friend.
Does anybody else have
Is there any reason to keep it? It's been vacant for how many years?
I'm, what's it, I'm just off the top of my head, it's probably five, ten years, I don't know, more than that even, yeah. You know, and the structure has got to be at least fifty, fifty-five years old.
I would say we probably get rid of it, but having a vendor idea out there at City Park isn't a bad one.
Hey, you got a real nice building right inside the park there that's not
Yeah, right.
We talked about doing some conversion at that, if we're gonna put money into something, put it into that building, not this thing.
Only got some parking out of the road and off it right away and
Yeah, that's what I would do actually. I think there would be value in that too, Brad, I really do.
I think the campground folks would appreciate having a store to buy campground supplies, firewood, that sort of thing.
The one thing that That comes with that is any expansion of facilities which arguably this could be, might run into the issue of needing to obtain permission.
And the other camp, private camp owner?
Correct.
What's the cost to tear it down? Have we looked into any of that yet?
Well, if we send our people out there, it's about four hours. Rob would go out there with his E and L ninety and a couple of dump trucks and it'd be gone in about a couple hours.
Yeah, I drive
It would be minimal cost.
Yeah, I drive by that a couple of times every day and it's an eyesore, I mean, at one time it was a different story. But it's not the kind of image you want to convey when people are driving around the lake or the park out there.
All right, it's history. We'll tear it down. Does anybody have a future agenda item they'd like to suggest?
Mayor, I passed this on to, a few weeks ago, I had occasion to listen to the, from the State Department of Agriculture, the state forestry guy that lives here in Watertown. Gave a very good presentation at a Lake Area Zoological Society meeting a couple of months ago. And he really zeroed in on the ash pour situation. And a very informative session that he presented, I think it'd be worth listening to him at some point. I think I passed his name on too, but I would suggest that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to see, we maybe look at the Showmobile funding.
Showmobile.
And how that was done. Had some spirited email conversation.
I betcha. The Showmobile. Anyone else? Well, why don't we adjourn and take a little break before the full council meeting? Thank you.